Oh, Reg or V, like Hennsted Council order. Ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Don't see any students.
Probably supporting.
Cut right. Okay, well, we, uh, it's our tradition that you can stand up and face the camera. Give your name, where you're from, what you majored in, please.
I'm Nicholas Cutright, I'm from Buchanan, and I'm majoring in accounting and philosophy.
Thank you, welcome. Steve Foster, readiness center update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, several months ago, in fact, maybe as many as, uh, 24 months ago, we talked about the opportunity that with the construction of a new readiness center on the part of the Western Army National Guard, we'd have an opportunity to participate in possibly constructing a conference center for the use of the citizens here in Upshur County. Last 24 months, a lot of people been working very hard with that, including the mayor, Michael Thos, number of different people in the community. Terry Mills is here this evening on behalf of the Army National Guard. Lieutenant Colonel Mills has been working very diligently as well, and they're getting final plans put together to break ground later this summer or early fall. And basically, this is going to come in stages. You may recall that a couple of years ago, General Tackett, when he was speaking to the Development Authority at our annual meeting, basically said, "This is going to be about a $50 million investment in Upshur County. This will be completely, when it's finished, new facilities for the Army National Guard, the US PFO, the field maintenance offices as well." And that whole issue will be moved out to Brushy Fork, just about a half a mile off the stoplight on Corridor H. They've got to the point now, they've been working for a while now with an architect, and they've come up with a preliminary design, and I'd like to share that with you this evening. This is a picture of Phase One, which will be constructed on Brushy Fork Road. It consists of basically two things. This is going to be a little hard for some of you to see here in the audience, so I'll move it around. There'll be a two-story building here, and also a single wing, which will house the Army National Guard and the people that are currently involved with the armory. This section here, as you can see, is going to be not quite two stories, but that's going to be the conference center. We asked them to design a conference center that would seat 300 people for dinner and 500 for lecture size crowds, in terms of individual stations that could be, happen there. The white buildings, which you see is the second part of this, it will include, for example, a drill hall here, which will be connected to the conference center, where you'd be have the possibility of being able to host a trade show, as well as a conference center at the same time. And to give you a feel for what that looks like, beyond just the schematic drawing here by the architect, and by the way, they've been very willing to work with us on things like what they call Buchanan red brick on the front, as opposed to regular split block, which a lot of the buildings are constructed with. It also will have period lighting, similar to what's down on Buchanan to carry the theme through. And over on this side will be a courtyard, where you could host things outdoors in terms of receptions, et cetera. And then this wing will be duplicated over here in the coming year, and that's where the US PFO offices will be located. And then the next step would be to create a separate entity for the field maintenance offices and the facilities to treat vehicles. Terry, have I got that pretty well right?
Sounds good, Steve.
Oh, cool, good, alright. Any questions on this? I'll be happy to pass around if you folks back here would like to take a look. It's not that heavy, you don't pass around?
Okay.
This is somewhat at a layout, it's still being refined.
I think you need to make it happen.
Let's happen for a while.
Basically, the green area here is the, and this will be the second story of that building, so all of these facilities will be dedicated to the Army National Guard. This will be your lobby. We're probably going to switch this hallway over to here, but this area in blue, as well as this area here, which is three classrooms, and this area, which is the kitchen, will basically support the conference center. It's going to be made with movable walls, so that you could have two large rooms here and three large rooms here for classrooms. There'll be basically 16-foot ceilings in the building, and this will be your kitchen, which is being built as a warming kitchen. So anybody that wants can have anybody catered, in terms of those spatial bits. This will be for storage, and this will be a hallway which will connect it over here, which in the next phase will include the drill, or March Drill Hall. So again, connecting the whole conference center to the drill hall. Again, it's roughly 9,318 square feet. Your courtyard will be there, and these walls will all be removed to let you have one large space or several small spaces. Again, plans are to break ground, go out to bid here pretty soon, and break ground this fall. Terry, anything you'd like to add?
Not a whole lot. Again, like Steve said, the bids need to be out, or the contract needs to be awarded before the end of September. The plan is to get as much work done, if weather permits, this fall as can be. Construction on first phase will be slightly less than 24 months, and then the rest of the phases, it's high on West Virginia's list, but there's a lot of other states out there vying for funding, so some of the other phases may take up to seven years to get all the phases totally completed. But, I mean, folks in West Virginia is working as hard as they can to get it done, but whenever Congress decides to appropriate the funds for it, then we can make it happen.
Again, we feel strongly there's a need for this type of facility, and all candidates is maybe once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to end up with something like this in our community. We know for a fact that Wesleyan College turns away over 50 different rental opportunities they have every year, which is quite frightening, they aren't even marketing or soliciting those type of activities. But because the students have first priority on the campus, because you can't really hold a wedding reception on the campus if you want to serve a champagne toast or a glass of wine, we think that this opportunity is going to be one that will really put a lot of people into our town, and into our downtown, and into our motels and hotels. Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Comments from anybody out here?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know enough, this might be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What's the, why is the National Guard so interested in providing a conference center for the community?
The National Guard in West Virginia has been very outreachy to the community. Wherever they have built new facilities in the past few years, they've gone to the communities and said, "Would you like to work with us on putting up something that would be appropriate for you?" I was just down to visit the new one in Ripley the other day. They have a brand-new, they actually built a large arena, which can seat about 6,000 people. Somersville has done the same thing there. They built both a conference center and an arena. We've visited all these people and talked with them and said, "What did you learn if you had to do different, what would you do?" Somersville said, "We made the conference center too small, and we should have made it larger." Now, their arena, I know, is used quite a bit for sporting activities, wrestling championships, basketball tournaments, religious conventions, and they've been very pleased with the use of their facility. But basically, Terry, it was General Tackett that took this approach and said, "Look, where do we recruit from? Where do we get the future Army National Guard folks? It's from the communities that we're located in. It's our chance to help participate with them and give them back something." Clearly, they'll have an opportunity to use this as well. Clearly, if there were some sort of national emergency, they're going to get first priority. But basically, it was their effort to give back to the communities, and a chance to enhance the whole community and make people want to be a part of the Guard.
Thank you. Is the conference center bigger than the one in, going to be in Somersville?
It is. It is larger than the one in Somersville. They can only seat, and Sam Nolte has been intimately involved with us on the part of the Development Authority, he's ill this evening and couldn't be here, but basically, we touched base with them on multiple occasions, and I think they can only seat about 200 for dinner. And the number we got from here, from talking with different organizations, is 300 at round tables with a dais is what we'd like to have. That facility gives it to us.
Steve, we had pretty extensive discussion as to whether to go within this arena in a conference center, and I believe that we felt for really higher utilization, the conference center made a lot more sense than having an arena.
A larger conference center, that's right. Because if you want a gym or an arena, Wesleyan College can seat approximately 5,000 people, I believe, in their gym. We were, in working with them, they said, "If you're really going to do anything that's going to be different from Wesleyan, you probably ought to go for 8,000 to 10,000 seats." Now, I just don't think we have the wherewithal to build something like that on a basis that would make any sense. You could hold a state basketball tournament here if you could do that, but that's what, you know, four or five days out of the year, it would be difficult to do that.
We could take a lot of business away from Flatwoods Conference Center down there, being as we're in the center of the state also. And Flatwoods stays awfully busy with their state meetings from all the state agencies and everything, they're pretty well booked. I see this as nothing but a plus for Upshur County and for Buchanan.
In all candid, there are people that have large weddings and want to have a large reception here, either go to Bridgeport or to Flatwoods to be able to hold those. There's no place here where you can do that. In fact, there's really, with the exceptional, possible exception of Stonewall, and even I don't believe they can take 300, there really is no place in seven counties here where you can go to have this type of facility.
Stonewall can only seat 225.
There's a man owns a room over there, so he'll look around.
That's right. They pay for that place.
If I may, the local share of the cost is not, we haven't nailed that down at this time, because there's still some variables. But we're looking at somewhere between 500 and maybe 700,000 dollars. And the worth of that is in like 3 million?
Three to four million dollars.
Three to four million dollars. And because the Guard's going to share some in the cost of that. And I've said this before, but I want to say it again, we will never have this opportunity again. If we let this pass us by, none of us will be alive the next time an opportunity like this comes up. And I really think that it's part of our duty to try to make our community as good for the next generation as we possibly can make it. And if we let this pass us, we're going to be sorry. And Laura, what's the role of the CDB here?
We've discussed it, and I think we're willing to take on a role with the conference facility. You know, we're starting to research and look at what we're able to do, so we're excited about it.
Mr. Mayor, one component I think you left out of it, obviously, the cost of the, the capital cost of building the thing is a big thing. But the other thing is, the Guard's also going to provide a lot of the maintenance, you know, mowing the grass, struggling to plow on the snow, those types of things, that if we were to try to build a conference center on our own and had to fund that, I mean, we all know what's happened when you have a stock or use center. Somebody's got to take care of that thing, and there's so many advantages to teaming with the Guard, not only in the building of the thing, but in the long-term maintenance and operation of it. That's a huge cost savings. How many times have you seen people give away a building and then people that get it can't afford to maintain it? This takes care of that, it's a great opportunity.
Who actually be handling the conference center part as far as?
We've talked to the CDB about that being a natural place to do it. It's done by different organizations though throughout the state. For example, the CDB in Somersville handles the bookings for their arena and their conference center. And Ripley is the Chamber of Commerce, which has elected to handle the responsibilities there. Elkins is just completing a new readiness center, and they elected as a city not to participate and put anything else additional there other than just a readiness center, which is sort of surprising to me, but they may have some other options available to them I'm unaware of. So, I believe over at Moorfield, Terry, if I'm not mistaken, this is going to be a junior college addition or an education facility somehow integrated with that facility that's going to be constructed over there. Others around the state that you're aware of?
I don't know the specifics on how each one, you're handling them.
But they're all done differently. We think it makes sense for the CDB to be involved with this in terms of bookings.
So do they actually have an office up there?
Not initially, we don't think one would be needed. There may be ultimately a need for someone to help with set up and take down all those good things, or we could share that cost with the National Guard, depending on how that's going to work. But ultimately, we'll have probably some additional staffing as this grows and becomes part of a growing entity here for conferences. And obviously, we would pay for that as the revenue comes in for that facility.
Steve, I had a chance to visit the one at Somersville early on, and as we were looking at these, just having a facility of the quality of what they put up in Somersville would be just superb for the area, in my opinion. It's, you know, it's not just weddings, or not just, but it draws all kinds of events to the area. And when you draw events to the area, you draw folks to the area who need to visit, need to stay someplace and have lunch or dinner, you know. So I think it's an excellent attraction.
We've tried to touch base with the Somersville people and see how they feel it's working, and without a doubt, the hotel motels and the restaurants there have seen a tremendous uptick since they put that facility in place.
Well, I know I'm involved with a conference right now that's going to be held in Morganton, because there's no facilities anywhere close to this part of the state that can handle the number of people and the size of the rooms, the number of rooms that are needed. We had a facility like this, we could attract that just as easily.
Is there anybody in the room who's opposed to this? I, I think that, you know, I've said this to you all before, we need to start talking about the money, and how we're going to do the money. Michael, have you any ideas about this?
Yeah, I actually wrote down a few options, and these are just options that we could consider for this, because it is, you know, as you had mentioned, half a million to 700, 800,000 dollars. If we wanted to go the grant route and fund, there's USDA Rural Development money, Appalachian Regional Commission, there's actually even money with the excess lottery revenue bonds, I got Section 108 housing from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and CDVG money. There's also an option, the city, if they wanted to use, from the city's contingency fund or rainy day fund, that's an option. There are another option, maybe not as popular, would be an excess levy. But I think the one that really would make sense for this, that a lot of municipalities are using, and even actually, as Steve had mentioned with Somersville, is using is doing a bond through the building commission, possibly like a 10-year bond. We'd be able to utilize our BNO through our retail and our wholesale, and even our contractors' BNO to make those payments, so those would be, all of those would really be viable options. I think the bond is probably the way to go.
Maybe we could have, do a little study on this, and by next meeting, maybe we could have some, nail down some recommendations as to how we proceed on this. Ron?
What's the county commission's play in all this, too?
The county commission, I believe, has been absorbing their share of this, they're paying the interest on a 1.4 million dollar loan?
A little more than that, 1.475.
Right, and I just thought it was, cities turn to step up. Now, there may be a possibility that the commission would be able to participate, but I think they're doing their share right now toward making this happen.
So the 58 acres that we purchased out there, this funded the county.
In turn, doesn't the county commission benefit from that, as getting the buildings and tenanted when this is all completed? Don't they get that property?
Once everything is vacated, it becomes the development's property. And it's our turn, our position, we need to take that, obviously, and turn that around in terms of getting compensation for it to help pay down the 1.475 million dollars. But there's 18 acres there, there are some significant buildings. Basically, we're out of space now at the business center, there's no reason why we couldn't look at that approach again, right down to that location in terms of having smaller important to us, they want to stay here. And I can't say enough about the Army National Guard and how they've worked with us on this program. I mean, you guys have brought us in from day one, you let us be a part of the planning process, we've gone through charrettes, we've met with the architect over in Fairmont, they clearly have heard us, and particularly with the elevation, the facility being brick as opposed to split block, and everything that we've asked for, they've really come back to us and said, "Here's what we can do, and here's what we can't do." So they couldn't have been better partners to work with. I agree with the mayor, this is an opportunity that you're never going to have again. You're going to end up with a 3 or 4 million dollar building for probably about 20 cents on the dollar.
And Steve, I think it's important to point out, this really shows a collaborative relationship between the county and the city. I mean, the Development Authority is really a subunit of the county, and they give us fairly significant contribution annually, the city also participates. But it's really one of those kind of diamonds in the rough, so to speak, that, you know, we have gone out, taken a little bit of risk, and I think it's really going to be a real nice payoff to the city and the county and the citizens. And, you know, we, five or six years ago, we did the same thing, the city and the county looked at purchasing the business center. And we got a phenomenal deal from the bank that was foreclosure, and, you know, it cost us a little over 300,000 dollars, and we're getting 200,000, almost 200,000 dollars a year in revenue, the center's completely filled. And we need, we could use some other space, incubators or technology, whatever you want to call it. So I agree, it's something we have to do, and it's very exciting, quite frankly.
Well, we'll continue to work on this. Obviously, we need to have your help on the financing side of it, but we're full speed ahead at this point in time. I know there's a meeting, I think tomorrow, Terry, in Charleston with the architect again, to sort of nail down the final plans on this, so we'll be moving dirt here shortly. We got about two years after we start moving dirt to heberd up.
What about the roads going out there, are those going to be, any improvements?
It's funny, I had that conversation today with General Birch, and he said, "You know, we need to start thinking about approaching the Department of Highways. It would be lovely to be able to have that Brushy Fork section widened from where it goes up to the airport, out to the light at Route 33 or Corridor H." And so that's something we need to start working with, and start locally with our Region Seven Department of Highways, but also start working with the folks in Charleston.
Any other questions?
Also, no, just, we discussed this in the Airport Authority the other day, the advantage of having this set of facilities, conference center and the light, right next to an airport, which could, whatever talent you may need for the conference, or speaker, or entertainer, they're going to fly into Buchanan, and you've got an airport right there, and they're practically on the site.
Army National Guard will use that airport as well. In fact, I think they've avoided to have them duplicate a landing helicopter pad, because it's right up the top of the hill there, less than a half a mile away.
Anything else?
Steve, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
From our sign-in, I see Connie Panger, you want to speak?
Um, I think I'm going to let Rick speak.
Okay, so you are.
Well, I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I'm here, Connie's talked to Skeeter, I've talked to Dave before about the building on Tucker Street. It's still there, we've still got a problem, I don't know what you all want to do with it.
We've, we've been rounding around over that, I know you all have too. But the, you know, we have a situation where, let's say that Person A owned the building, and we took the steps that were required under our ordinance to have them demolish the building. And Person A sold this to Person B, and we had to start the process again. And Person B now comes back and says, "That's not my building." And Person A says, "That's not my building." And we could tear into that, but there's asbestos in there. The estimate that we have on that building is that it's going to cost up toward 20,000 dollars to abate the asbestos. And we're going to spend another 3,000 to 5,000 dollars tearing it down, hauling it away, and paying to have it disposed of in a proper construction debris landfill. So we're only going to have 25,000 dollars in that. It's taxpayer money, your money, not ours. And Person A holds a deed to trust on the building. We could attach a lien, but talking with three or four different lawyers who tell me that the deed to trust trumps any lien. So we're out to 25,000 dollars, and we have nothing to show for it, except a vacant lot that belongs to somebody else. And I know that's a problem, but I'm trying to lay out for you where we are with this. We have been exploring some legal issues, some legal opportunities, which I'm not at liberty to discuss at this point in time, to see if we can determine who the owner of the property is, so that we know who to take action against. Right now, we just don't know. Now, Rich, am I on track here?
Well, I need to say, we've had similar situations. I don't like the building any more than you do.
Rich, may I interrupt you one second?
Sure.
My concern is the safety of the kids at the school.
Our student.
There's, we know what's in there. I've been in the building, I know there's broken glass, I know there's beer bottles, I know that there's a problem.
Cigarette butts.
Cigarette butts, you know, they're going in and out of it. What happens when someone gets hurt in there? Who is Owner A and who is Owner B, who's going to be responsible?
And when the asbestos?
As of the deed right now, I know who owns the building. I've been to the courthouse, done the research. The deed tells who owns the building. I don't care about the deed to trust, it's he owns the property. I'm sorry, Rich.
Well, I was just trying to, another example was Leonard Memorial Hospital. It took almost five years from the time that we started that process, but I was unwilling to spend any taxpayer money to get rid of that building, even though it was in probably as bad or maybe even worse shape, had a lot of hazards in it. The building on Tucker Street had hazards as well. We had a hazmat team come in from Charleston and remove chemicals from inside that building. There are, and I agree with you, there are serious concerns to get the property owner again, whether it's A or B, I really don't have. But the question is, really, you want to spend 25,000 dollars of taxpayer money, and you're basically going to have nothing when you get done. I have had people come in, I've had probably three different parties total, three or four, had one group that came in and submitted a set of plans, they were going to buy the property, tear the building down, which includes getting rid of the asbestos, put a house on there, and rent it out. The trouble was, they wanted to put a little bit more of a house on there than what that lot can hold in many respects. And they needed about five variances in order to get what they wanted to put on there. The Southern Board of Appeals denied that. Typically, the lot is, and I've got a map here if you want to look at it, but the lot has, was originally taken off the back of the lot that faces College Avenue. I mean, it was not originally plotted separately. There was a dairy there, I believe, was probably the first structure, and then it became the glass works. But I've had some parties- But I've had some parties come in and say they want to either rehab the building as it is, put a new roof on it. I had a party just two weeks ago come in and say they would tear it down. They would get rid of it. They would invest in it. They would build a, a small home on there. It would typically take a home, but it'd have to be a two-story in order to get enough square footage for the lot size. Put a home on it, put a garage on it, and so on. I gave them the details, gave them, you know, all the information I had, but they haven't been back. You know, if, to me, the best situation would be for the owner, the original owner, to step forward and take care of the problem. They're the ones that created the problem. They're the ones that should be responsible. That's, that's how I feel about it. But they have, if anything, tried to get out from underneath their responsibility, in my opinion. And I'm, if you want my opinion, I'm a little reluctant to spend $25,000 of taxpayer money and just basically watch it go, because we wouldn't have a legal claim once they step back in. And this has happened before in another situation, the exact same process, one party was different, but I've seen it happen before.
So you're saying that $25,000 of the taxpayers' money is worth maybe a child's life?
No.
I'm sorry, but that's what it sounds like to me.
I've done just about everything I can to keep that building secure, and I agree, it's not secure now. But-
There's acid in it? There's rats? I have grandchildren, and I'm a taxpayer too, and so isn't my daughter. Now, that property is, the bricks or the blocks are falling out from the outside. We have been here and have asked you over and over for three years, and you have done nothing to help us. It's getting worse. Every time there's a storm, pieces of that property blow into our yard. We know for a fact that there are children in there, and you have 600 students at a Buckhannon Academy, many of which live in town, many of which ride their bikes by there every single day. You go in, you have children go in to a building that is in the shape that it's in. They light a cigarette, or they play with matches, and you're going to have a catastrophe. And at that point, it is too late. Now, obviously, all of us are concerned because it's bringing our property value down too. I'm not going to stand here and, or sit here and act like I'm so noble that it's all for the children, but that is the main concern, the children. And at $25,000, you put $25,000 in signs, street signs, I'm sorry, but that's not worth a child's life. And you have, over and over and over again, you talk about Person A and Person B. Well, go after Person A, because he's the one who's created this problem. He's created other problems in the past. And there's also asbestos going into the soil. When it rains, it goes into the water system. And I know that the children at the, all the schools, the parents have to be given a paper about pesticides and chemicals and all of that, and they have to sign off on that every year. I don't know what the guidelines are as far as how far away that can be, or if it is just in the building that they're in, but those are issues that you all ought to think about. Because you can't tell me that that asbestos is not going into the soil, which is going into the water system.
Will $25,000 cover the whole cost? Because now it looks like you're going to have to have a fakes one environmental done as far as the contaminants in the soil. There's going to be other, other issues besides just tearing the building down.
The estimate that we have is 19,000, some, somewhere in that neighborhood, to go in and remove the asbestos. That was, we figured we could use our own crews to actually tear the building down. We've done that before on other, other structures.
What about the contaminants in the soil?
That's beyond my expertise, but it should be tested, certainly before it's used. My guess is, the report as it comes back is the asbestos is in the roofing material, and it's in the caulking around the windows. Both of those would probably not lead a great deal into the soil, but that's pure speculation on my part, just because of the type of material.
What about the chemicals? You said you already had a big truck.
They've been all, they were all removed by asbestos.
By what, that tall? And there's something running around?
Oh, it's hard to say. We had difficulty with the chemicals that were thrown away in the dumpster. But they were, they've been in that building since probably when it was used.
Can I say something? This is one of the areas that absolutely drive me over the edge sometimes. And I've been on the council almost eight years, and we've talked about this property, you know, in the Consolidated Board Works and the Housing Authority area and City Council. And we do this way too often. I mean, we have to change the process so that we have accountability for people that are not being responsible for their properties. And, you know, Kenny does want to talk about some of the legal lease. We need to, as far as I'm concerned, go after A and B both, because they both should be held accountable. And maybe we need to determine, you know, go to court and find out who's the true owner is, and then go from there. But we need a timeline, we need a timeframe, and we just talk about it too much. I mean, we did it with abandoned cars for years and years, you know? We have to have the will to take on some very unpleasant tasks occasionally, and, you know, sometimes it's dealing with people that we know and we're friends with, but they need to be responsible. And I, I think this council tonight will say, look, we're tired of this, we're going to do something about it. We're going to, you know, have our city attorney really put this on the front burner, or we're going to have to go spend $2,000 or $3,000 maybe to go to a law firm and get their opinion, because I can't believe the city should be stymied by this kind of process. It just, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it's an embarrassment. And I know we're all embarrassed by it. We need to do something about it instead of talking about it all the time. And I'm not being critical of you, Rich, or you, Kenny, or the rest of the council. I feel just as frustrated as everybody, and I'm embarrassed for myself in some ways, because we've been talking about this kind of stuff. And there's other, there's other property we talk about too, and we need to have, you know, we spent last council meeting talking about this very same thing, different pieces of property.
I bring it up every spring.
Excuse me, Winnie's been trying.
I just have two questions. Does the city own that lot or not?
No, the city does not own that lot.
Okay, who's paying the taxes on that property?
Last time we looked, no one.
Well, I, I think this goes back to what's really concerning us. I live right across the street where the doors are. I see kids going in and out of there all the time, and it's just some place that's waiting for an accident. Of course, it's elementary on the parent fully, or did they have a recourse?
Well, one of those kids get hurt, I mean, it's a civil lawsuit. And at that point in time, someone's going to be identified as the owner. I mean, that, that's what I think we, we have to do and push it quickly. Who is, who is the owner? Who's responsible? Skeeter, you started.
I just started to say, I bring it up every spring. We have repeated fenders, repeated fenders, repeated fenders, and next spring we'll be talking about the same thing again. We've got a house down on East Main Street. We've got grass that needs cut. It's the same thing all the time. Mr. McCauley has told us many times, we have the ordinance to take care of this, we have the teeth in it, and why aren't we doing it?
That's a good question, yes.
Mr. McCauley, what?
We're, we're tiptoeing through the tulips on who the titled owner is. The titled owner is Mr. Tenney. And if we want to get tough and go after Mr. Tenney, both civilly and criminally, we have the mechanism to do it. All you need to do is tell me to do it.
I made a motion to do that.
Not, 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 hold on a second. The last conversation that Mr. Clemmons had with Mr. Tenney, at my urging, Mr. Tenney said he didn't have anything in the property. So basically, what I have counseled the mayor on and what we weren't looking to divulge this evening, which I guess now we're going to divulge our strategy-
Sure.
-is, we're going to bring Mr. Tenney in and say, either you own it or you don't. If you own it, clean it up, or you're going to jail. If you don't own it, sign this affidavit and say this transaction between you and Mr. Stell was a ruse, and then we're going to go after Mr. Stell. So there's our strategy. That's what needs to be done. It's ridiculous. I agree with everybody else that it's ridiculous, but we've, we've been played through a series of legal games, as the mayor indicated, and, you know, if, if you want somebody to go to jail, we can make that happen.
So when this meeting will take place? Do we know, have we started that process?
I have not contacted Mr. Tenney. I don't know that Mr. Clemmons has contacted him to bring him in, to confront him with, are you going to claim to be the owner or not? If not, here's an affidavit for you disvowing ownership and-
So I, I think we should do that within 10 days. Do we make all of that before the next meeting?
We can, that's 20.
We have to cite him.
Two weeks.
Criminal man.
I mean, what frustrates me is we have talked about this a lot, and now we're, we're going to take some definitive action, but it really took Connie Painter, Winnie, and Rick Wright to sort of push us to do that. And I, I agree with what Skeeter's saying. We, we need to have more teeth in what we're doing, or we're just sort of being a laughing stock, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Again, I would characterize it as though we have the teeth, we just haven't bitten down.
Well, despite, we need to bite down.
Well, we had, the reason I, you know, I don't, where you put people on alert, but we had planned to do exactly what David just described, and so now you know, we're going, we're going, we're going to play that card and see what happens.
How long has that plan been in process? I mean, did we just talk about, you guys just talked about that today?
No, no, it's, it's the last council.
Yeah, or after the last, between the last council meeting and this.
We need to move it on then.
It's actually after the last housing enforcement board.
We need to, we need to cite Mr. Tenney and get him before our municipal judge.
Make that happen? Cite him, cite him tomorrow? Put a little paper here, get a little white print, the newspaper.
This was, this was a process that we decided about three or four weeks ago, but we were, we didn't want to get it out in the public, and now it is out in the public.
Back this day, you've been coming-
I understand.
For three years.
Yeah.
And if you had that hall for three years, that building has continued to deteriorate, fall down, and right now, anybody that would walk in there, it's in danger of a bean falling on them, of glass, chemicals, whatever. But it is all, now that it's getting warmer, a child lights a match in there, and it is going to be a disaster. So you've had, if you've had it on the books, please don't wait three more years. Do it this week.
I'm glad you're okay tonight, but I also think we need to, as we've talked about here tonight, we need to get a process that's more time-sensitive and get things like this done.
Yeah, that, that particular property, I think, is the worst in town, but it's not the only problem. There's number, there's number right after. And I fully agree, let's get rid of it. It's a question of who am I end up paying for?
Perhaps as soon as it's done with this property, then the other property owners in town will take heed, and you won't have to go through it.
It's part of it. I don't want to split the bill. I think the person that's responsible ought to take care of it.
I agree. They should take care of it.
Should have taken care of it a long time ago.
So what's the process, Dave? What's, what's the plan? We're all agreeing here, let's do something.
We'll get him cited and get him before judge, judged by next Friday, when he has court. Not, not tomorrow, but next Friday.
The warrant will be issued by Randall Vaughn, our municipal court judge, and we'll bring him before the court.
Well, just within the last couple weeks, we've had this conversation on making the city more beautiful and cleaning up people's properties, but this isn't a case of beautification. It's a case of safety.
None of us up here disagree with you.
We do not disagree with you. Are we, are we ready to move on?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks, thanks. We'll update you in a couple weeks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Department of Board of Reports, Michael, can you hear me?
Yeah. Very important matter in front of you today.
How about a, about a two-minute timeout, in case it looks like some people are wanting to get out? Thanks for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Can we stick the air on maybe?
Yes. Can you check the air where?
Pam was getting hot over here.
I said, thanks to you.
Thanks a lot, Rich.
Well, that was a two minutes. Okay, we're back. Michael, you have a report for us?
I sent to you, you have in front of you in your packet, the 2012, 2013 budget, pronounce that right, and levy estimate. Basically, it's the formal document that we submit to the state auditor's office. It's part of the entire process with our budget for next year. There's a little bit more I want to add to that later on, but I wanted to put that in front of you. When we had our budget committee meeting, nothing has changed except for a few little items that I want to mention to you. We were actually waiting on getting some stuff back from the state in our assessor's office for our property tax and levy. It was a final component of that. We did receive that. That's actually up a little bit, specifically about $62,000. I talked to, talked to our assessor today, Helen Phillips, and she mentioned that the reason for this increase has been the Aaron's development, the little portion of the micro hotel, and the strip mall out by Walmart have added to the contribution of that. So with that being said, in increasing the revenue side of our budget, $62,000, I decided to take our BNO tax down a little bit, my BNO tax projection down a little bit, which shouldn't really worry you too much, because, you know, I'm actually taking that revenue estimate down. We should receive more in that estimate. I just think it's a good practice. We've already got our expenditures from our departments and made that work within our budget. We found this new $62,000, so in a way, I kind of made that disappear, not in a bad way. It's there, believe me. And I increased our, our balance on hand estimate a little bit as well, as noted in the previous budget committee meeting, that unassigned, or that, that balance on hand or unassigned fund balance is actually significantly lower than what we will probably project it in this fiscal year on, approximately $200,000 to $250,000, maybe more than that. It's trending right now at about $200,000 to $250,000, which will be a council's discretion if they would like to take all of that or a portion of that money and put that into our rainy day or municipal stabilization fund, or actually go and look at maybe increasing some expenditures as well. So again, I'm, I'm downplaying my revenue projections and basing my expenditures off of that, so don't worry about the BNO. We should receive well more than what we have budgeted in there, and that's certainly money if we get in a pinch. God forbid, in any court in a budget year, we'll be able to have some of that money that we can amend that to the good. But with that said, again, this is a process, this has to get in front of our auditors at the state's office so they can take a look at this and get it back. So I would ask council tonight to approve the 2012, 2013 budget and levy estimate, and have the mayor and/or court assign all the necessary documents so we can submit it to the auditor's office.
Your motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion when we approve that, but I want to make a couple comments.
Okay, is there a second? One second. Motion made in the second. This case, Dave?
Yeah, you're saying that the increased revenue from the, from what you talked with Helen was $62,000 more than what you had today?
Right.
I'm not going to make a specific recommendation right now, but I, I would like to throw something out to the, to the council to think about this, because, you know, what we approved tonight, you can make adjustments to it later on. Am I correct?
Let me stop you for a minute. That is true. We always do a budget revision right out the chute in July, because we have to get our, our coal tax on the nose. So if there's anything between now-
So, if there's anything between now and then that pops up, or, or there's an additional thing, we can always, we have to do a revision anyway.
All right. I, I've discussed this a little bit with you, Michael, and I mentioned it to, to Kenny, and in fact, Pam and I were even talking about it before the meeting started tonight. In last, last meeting, we talked with the budget, you've added one additional personnel for Jerry Arnold there.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I talked to Jerry this week a little bit, too, and, you know, I, years and years ago, I worked in corporate America, and when, when you have demand outstrips supply, your entity has three options most of the time. You can add additional personnel, staffing, hourly, week, whatever. You can add temporary people, or you can add overtime. And we have a very capable workforce, as we have discussed previously, and with the kind of projects we have, a lot of them have to be done in really good weathers, you know, paving and concrete work and completion of Jawburn and other things. I think we ought to give serious consideration to bumping up a overtime for part of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And, you know, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody that works for the city, but oftentimes you find people that are willing to work 10 extra hours a week for three or four or five months to get some of the projects done. And I think we ought to give serious consideration to that, and I think we all ought to give that some thought. We've got so many things we need to do, and again, these grants are wonderful, but it takes a lot of time to get them accomplished, and when we're doing those, we're sort of not paying attention to some things that we should be doing on a daily basis. So, I don't know if there would be five or 10 or 15 people willing to work overtime for three or four months, you know, 10 hours a week, is something you'd sit down with the staff, but I think we ought to enhance that line item at some point in time, Michael. I think it's really important for it.
Are you talking about in lieu of the additional employee?
No.
Or in addition?
In addition to that. Yeah, I mean, one, one thing, when you're in a, in a business cycle upturn, oftentimes the, the companies won't hire full-time people because you have to add not only the, the hourly wage or the salary, but you have to pay the benefits and everything else, so it's very costly, and you're getting people that are not experienced. But, you know, these grants have a definitive timeline, and we've got to get them done, and I think the sooner we get them done, the better off we're going to be, and why not use our current employees if they're willing to work some overtime for us? And, and I think a lot of them would probably. I mean, I don't know, you'd have to sit down with a supervisor, but I think we ought to put a additional line item in there to increase the overtime to get these things done. You know, you, if you take one person, or two people, or three people, and start them at one hour before normal time and let them work an extra hour, you might get two pouring of concrete for sidewalks or something. I mean, it's something to think about, so...
Another thing, you could kind of fire temporary help to do the grassmower and let the skilled people do the skilled work.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think the rainy day fund is great, it's nice to have, but this extra $62,000, let's use it to get the stuff done that's out there.
I think that's, that's a good idea, Dave, but the, one thing that I see is some of these grants are going to get done, and then when they are done, you don't necessarily want extra employees that you may not have the need for.
That's why, that's why I'm suggesting, that's why I'm suggesting overtime instead of hiring people.
I don't have any problem.
It's certainly a good conversation to have with, with Jerry Arnold, I'll be more than happy to sit down and speak to him about, you know, projects that are happening right now, and where's he going to be, you know, six months or three months down the line, six months down the line, or even a year down the line, and get back to you on that. If that's valid. He, I know that Jerry's practice is he does have part-time individuals that will go and do some of that stuff, so he can use his more skilled labor, if you will, to focus on those projects, and I think that's a practice that I know the brief time I've been here, Jerry's been doing, and I'm going to take a guess that he's probably been doing that during the period of time.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the budget for 2013, or 2012.
12/13.
12/13. Further discussion? All in favor of the question, signify some, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. And we'll get those signed and out of here. I will note that the requirement for laying the levy will be April 17th, at, what we say, 10:00 in the morning. We will need a quorum, it only takes a few minutes, but we'll let you know that date and time, but we'll need to have you here for a very brief meeting on that day.
10 o'clock works.
Lay the levy.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Again, as Rich alluded to, it's, it's a very short meeting, you all have been through it before, and, but we need a, we need counsel.
Has to be that day.
It has to be that day, the time is optional.
Time can vary, but...
It has to be that day. All right. The next item is, you should have in front of you, a couple of handouts. First handout is just the general fund financial report summary for the ending of February 29th, which you won't see that often. I just want to report to you that the general fund revenue at this, at this point, when this was reported, was $2,422,979.84 in revenue, and expenditures were $2,268,664.66, which is a positive net difference at this point of $154,315.18. Our revenues associated with our taxes, fees, fines are trending slightly above our projected expectations. Overall, our expenditures are within or slightly less than the budget appropriations for the year, which is right where you want to be. The fiscal status of the city of Buchanan's general fund are making sound. I anticipate that the budget will meet our quarterly benchmarks for the final fiscal quarter coming up for this year. Other business, Rich took care of the levy laying. We was approached by a committee that was looking into, I think they were associated with Create Buchanan, of doing some banners downtown. You should have a copy of a banner that they're wanting to do for Strawberry Festival, and they were asking if, if the city would go ahead and, and with them buying all new banners, and you've seen some of our brackets downtown, asking if council would consider purchasing new banners for these banners and other banners that we have currently in stock, and any other banners that this committee or group may want to purchase throughout the season and throughout the year. We looked into that, and, you know, some of our brackets are in kind of bad shape downtown. The committee had suggested maybe looking into what Wesleyan College has. I know it's been kind of the approach of, of the city to, to kind of have some uniformity in our beautification, and look at what, you know, Wesleyan College is doing and, and other places around, to try and find some uniformity, and kind of keeping in the spirit of that, and looking at some new banner brackets. We did locate a company that has, has the brackets that we would need, and they're roughly $2,200. I would ask council to consider authorizing the purchase of 23 banner brackets for these banners and other banners that we have currently in stock, and other banners that may come along for our downtown streets in the amount of $2,200. I will note with council that that expenditure will come out of council's capital outlay, which sits at about $18,500 right now.
Motion?
Send it.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in a second. Further discussion?
All in favor, signify some, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it.
Okay. Next item is, council's been presented with the second draft of the employee handbook. I've had an opportunity to speak with several council members, and they have made suggestions on their feelings and changes, possibly in the handbook, those were certainly taken into consideration. Some of those changes were made, also met and distributed these to some of our department heads, and wanted some feedback from them, and they've presented feedback as well, and those were taken into consideration. So, you have, if you will, the second draft as marked on the handbook. I'd still, again, ask council to take a look at this draft, and I'm going to present this draft to our city attorney, actually, grandstanding, I'll give that to you right now, and for his legal review, and also, kind of a unique thing, we have a representative from our insurance company that will be here next Tuesday, I believe. This individual will be conducting a citywide risk assessment, and one of the things that he's mentioned in his prelim report in, in coming here is asking about a employee handbook, the fact that we do not have one. So, I'm actually going to provide him with a copy of our handbook from a risk assessment standpoint, insurance standpoint, and have him take a look at that as well. If there are no other corrections, and once Dave has butchered it, basically, I will be taking the final handbook and presenting it to council for consideration and adoption sometime by late May or early June, but definitely within this fiscal year, and getting that into shape. So, we'll have legal review, peer review, council review, and even an outside representative with risk assessment from an insurance company to take a look at this. I think we'll have all our bases covered.
So, so we have suggestions or revisions, we send them both to you and Dave?
No, actually, send them to me, and I'll pass those along to Dave McCollum. The other items, I just want to update you on our street sweeper bids, those are out. They're, they're due by April 5th. Again, telling council that we are working hard to try to secure the financing and the sweeper prior to early May and the upcoming Strawberry Festival. I know several of you had expressed that we try to expedite that process as much as we can within the law, so that's what we're doing during this auction, so we'll be running ads appropriately, and Mr. Kelly, from Dave Kelly's Auction, has, has asked to be our auctioneer at no cost. He feels bad about the, the last bid, although it wasn't his fault at all, it was just a bad bid, so he's going to be doing that for free. So, just take note of that, and if you have any other questions, please, I'd be happy to answer those. Again, you have a condensed version of our revenue expenditure report ending February 29th. If you'd like any detailed report, get me after council, and I'll be happy to print you one out, give me that information. That's all I have.
Questions for Mike?
I, I have a question.
Go.
When you say within the law regarding this street sweeper, what, what do you mean by that?
Well, there's a process we have to go through, we have to bid it out, we have to secure financing with them, that'll have to come in front of council, so, and there may be a, a waiting period, depending if, if they don't have that sweeper in inventory. If it's a 45 to 60-day period, I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to be able to, to fulfill that, so, as much as we can move the process along legally is what we're doing.
But we're no longer considering the, we have to make a couple of payments in this fiscal year, that's not going to...
Actually, a couple of companies have already inquired about the street sweeper, and we've, we've told them our situation, that we're looking at lease purchase, and, and that's actually included within, within the bid specs in the packet, and we've mentioned to them what we're looking at, we don't have money budgeted for this current fiscal year, but we do for next fiscal year, and we would be happy if payment would be, you know, made in July, and they have had no problem with that, so the companies...
I'll tell the council a funny story, I hope they think it's funny, but the, the, the street sweeper went by my house a couple of weeks ago, and I actually had more stuff in front of my house after they went by, and, and I went out there sweeping the, the street.
I told them to dump it.
Thank you, but that, that's not the funny story, the, the funny story is I'm out there sweeping the street, and I've got like two or three buckets, and somebody stopped by and said, "We thought you were getting a new street sweeper." I said, "Well, here I am." So, I thought it was funny at the time.
The sweepers that we're looking at that have been demonstrated to us will, will do the job, you won't have to worry about extra stuff in front of your house.
Dave, I was up here mugging them all, not to laugh.
Thanks, Mike.
I thought it was funny.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
Yeah, yeah, I just know people really want their street sweeper...
Other questions?
Probably within the law wasn't really the right word, but...
Yeah, okay.
Everything should be done within the law.
Exactly, there you go, we just want to reinforce that.
I didn't want to get handcuffed or something.
Have Dave rest here.
Sam Ludlow, City Engineer.
I've been sitting back here trying to figure out how I got ahead of the police chief, but that's okay. We did have a sanitary board meeting this afternoon. We had noted that you all have on your agenda the ordinance relative to the loan or the Russian port sewer, which had been a recommendation of the sanitary board to city council a month ago. Appreciate the fact that it's on the agenda. We noted that the NPDs permit application is on track, we've had communication with DEP this past week. They noted that they've done their preliminary review and actually prepared a, a draft of their permit. It's under internal review within DEP, so it still may be some time before we see it, but they seem to be satisfied with the information that we provided. We talked about our combined sewer overflows briefly. Part of our program is to have public information, and we obtained a number of different brochures, which are put out in the lobby here at City Hall. We have done that over quite a period of time, but we had run out and got, got a new set of brochures, and they are here in the, in the lobby. Richie Street, we talked about the storm sewer project, and it continues to move ahead. We laid pipe off Pocahontas, we set the two boxes that go in Pocahontas, have to make a dog leg in the street, and that's complete. We laid about, off of the street right away, and about 40 feet up into the Wesleyan lot toward the alley between Pocahontas and Fayette. Project goes slowly because it's difficult, big, big pipe and deep installation and other utilities in the way, but we haven't encountered any, any particularly difficult issues. We did have a difficult issue with the force main from the Elias pump station to the plant. We had another leak in that pipe, and these leaks are really relatively minor, comparing the flow that gets to the plant to the flow that leaks out of the pipe. We have a 14-inch pipe, maybe a two-inch hole in the pipe, so 90, 95% of the flow is still going to the plant, but that's still not acceptable. Very difficult situation because you can't take the force main out of operation for very long at all, and a difficult pipe to repair, but we did successfully repair that, but we seem to be having continuing problems, and we're going to conduct some investigation about the extent of that problem, and see if there's some preventive measures that we can take, replace certain segments of the pipe. We've gotten reports back, preliminary reports, every six months, we have to do testing in our lab with comparative samples. Phil Jenkins is responsible for that, and again, this is a repeat condition, but again, he, he came very close to the actual values, well within the limits for these parameters that he's obligated to, to satisfy, so he, he did very well on that, and as a reward, he gets a entire lab inspection next week, and so, he's, he's been working on preparations for that for the last month. It's an annual inspection. We lost an employee in November, and we didn't seek to replace that person through the winter, but getting into better weather, we are looking to add another employee, and the board authorized us to proceed with that, and that was all.
Questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam. I guess that makes it the chief's turn.
Well, we began our citizens' noise academy just this last Tuesday, and I'm very pleased to report that we have 18 participants taking part in the class, and it looks like it's going to be a very good class, first class is very engaging, a lot of good questions being asked, so we have nine more weeks to go, so we're, we're very happy that it's up and running again. I brought this handy old device up here with, with me, some of you may have seen this already, some may not, this is the sound level meter that the city purchased a while back to run some test runs as we explore an updated noise ordinance. I was asked, actually, the last time I was here last month, to do some tests with this myself, and most of the police department didn't have a report ready for council at this meeting, so that's why I bring this. A dead pass is along to the officers and ask them to, to take some practical readings and give me some feedback in terms of... give me some feedback in terms of whether or not they found it easy to use. I myself, when I inspected it, it comes with a little manual and it's very easy to read. The machine itself is very easy to use. It's really no difficulty with that. Just some thoughts from the notes that I received from the officers. It does have a variety of different settings that you can place it on. Our tests were done in the DBA range, which is the typical range you would find when enforcing any kind of decibel limit. However, it does have other ranges. So if we do institute this into a noise ordinance, we want to make sure that we specify the DBA range and that's the commonly accepted range amongst law enforcement. It is sensitive to wind. We did find that. The manual talks about a windshield in here. However, if you just use it as it is, it is sensitive to wind. We did find that just based on this construction, it's also very sensitive on the direction. And that's just due to the construction of the microphone. You'll see just on the tip here is where it actually will receive the sound. So if you have it pointed right at a source, you'll get a truer reading than if you're just holding it up like this. It definitely, just that simple little action would skew the results. So just being aware of that if we do adopt this and train one would be important. We did, as I said, we did some practical tests with the machine. Here is some of the, here are some of the results. We noticed that obviously distance is a factor with this. I could hold this simply right here in my hand and record a much higher DBA range than if I was to record your office conversation. So certainly distance is a factor. And I'll look to this in a couple of minutes in my review of other ordinances that have decibel ranges. Distance is often a factor, it's noted in the ordinance itself. So certainly we need to be cognizant of that because it greatly affects the reading on the machine. Office noise is noted in the notes. Office noise was tested first. General conversation at 10 feet is in the 40 to 60 DBA range. And let me just kind of paint a picture just instead of just throwing these numbers out what that means. The manual comes with a chart of typical sound levels, what you find in the A. Whispers at 5 feet is typically 30 DBA. Small offices, just the noise around the small offices is 50 DBA. A freight train at 100 feet is 80 DBA. A subway at 20 feet is 90 DBA. A chainsaw is 100 DBA. And a jet takeoff at 200 feet is 120 DBA typically. That's just to kind of paint the picture. So as I throw these numbers out with our results, you'll kind of have something to compare it to as to how loud or how soft that may be. A person whistling at 20 feet was 65 DBA on this machine. A pack of Post-it notes dropped on table at 1 feet was 71 DBA. So again, distance certainly is a factor with this. A pack of Post-it notes dropped on the table at 3 feet is 60 DBA. Just a door shutting on its own force at 5 feet is 97 DBA. A rolling chair bumping into a desk at 3 feet was 65 DBA. And a loud heating vent, what we hear at 6 feet is 60 DBA. Street noise, when they took it out and just took practical measurements on what they would hear on a typical patrol. A non-modified car, just a regular car accelerating normally from a red light on wet roads was 80 DBA, just normal acceleration. The roadside, just standing at the roadside by a wet road, cars driving by at 30 feet, 30 feet from the roadside is 70 to 75 DBA. A large unmodified pickup, again, just a regular pickup, accelerating normally from a red light at 20 feet was 83 DBA. An SUV, just a regular SUV at 3 feet was 85 DBA. A bar with a live band had the door shut. The officers were across the street at approximately 50 feet, registered at 76 DBA, 76 DBA. Same bar with live band with door shut and they were 10 feet closer at 40 feet, 80 DBA. Driving in a car with just general roadway noise, windows up, 80 DBA. Driving with the windows down, 90 to 100 DBA. Of course, a lot of that could have very well been the wind. Strong gusting wind noise was 80 DBA. Of course, again, I noted it's sensitive to the wind. I did, in addition to our notes on the machine itself, I do look at a number of ordinances that are around. I don't know of any in West Virginia off the top of my head. I know that I put this note out a couple of years ago when we were also talking about decibel levels. And I got one response back from a department that used to have decibel meters but got away from them. I think they ran into some trouble. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what was on those calibration trouble or the way their ordinance was written. I'm not sure. But other than that, I don't know any in West Virginia. I did find some from North Carolina, some in New York City obviously has a pretty tight noise ordinance. And I noticed that no two ordinances were written exactly the same. There were some differences. They did share some commonalities, but there were quite a few differences as well. Some of the notes that I took in reviewing this, I did notice that the commonality was they did have time restrictions on when there would be limits on certain decibel levels. Again, as you can imagine, those time limits were strictly focused on the nighttime hours, typically between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The DBA restriction, decibel restriction was probably one of the biggest differences between the ordinances that I found. And that ranged anywhere from 60 to 80 DBA. So given the scale that we had to compare to and given our practical notes, you can kind of see what would fall, you know, if we elected to fall in that range, where would be sound wise just on a regular patrol. Some imply a distance. Again, as I noticed, distance certainly would be a factor with this. One example was 35 feet. You think 35 feet or greater, the decibel limit would be a factor. Others simply state that the reading would occur from the edge of the property line from the source of the complaint. Depending on where that might be, that could be a lot closer than 35 feet.
From the source of the complaint or the source of the noise?
Source of the complaint. One ordinance actually said that it's unenforceable unless you get a complaint, which I don't know if I'd recommend that. I think we would want to be proactive with our noise ordinances as we have in the past.
Take it to the property line of the noise.
Yeah, yeah. And it's.
If it's the source of the noise.
Property line of the noise.
Well, it's not what you're. Complaint, the complaint is the noise in the fraternity house. Property line of fraternity house is where you're taking it.
We weren't even.
That's the way I'd look at the complaint. Well, we lay everything else out of bags, things.
Those are just some of the thoughts or some of the observations that I made just in reviewing this and just as I make this report to council for your office information. One other note, I did check with the comm center. The city police has received from January 1st to present to today, 15 noise complaints. 15 noise complaints we've received. And I didn't ask for a breakdown as to is that vehicle or noise? But I can just tell you from my experience, it's typically people playing their TV or their music too loud in their house. Most noise complaints are focused on a residence as opposed to a vehicle. Just in my experience. I know I have, and this is something that we should be cognizant about if we explore using this, certainly with time limits. I've received, in my experience, noise complaints on lawn mowers. And certainly we expect a lawn mower is going to be loud, it's going to be used during the day. This particular lawn mower was, I think they were using it at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning. The person that called thought it was a little too early for a lawn mower. So certainly with time limits, I think that's something you can make it a little more objective at that point. I did receive a complaint one time that, you know, if you have something that's objective and it's, you know, if it's, and the time isn't in the middle of the day, then he wouldn't technically call in that decibel limit. But if we had something that fell in the middle of the day, it would apply to him. There's no real gray area with something like this. So again, just some thoughts that I give council as I report back on sound level.
We'll send the drums to your house where there is no one.
No, that's, I'll tell you, I've got to sign, getting ready to get that eight so where you can be a band. That's my worst fear. You got a drum set for Christmas one year. We put it in the yard so it'll spring.
Any questions for Matt?
I have a concern, Matt. I've had some people bring it to my attention and so I've been observing myself is the speed limit that some of our officers are going down through town when they're going on a call. Unless it's a hostage situation, I feel an extra 15 seconds isn't going to make a big difference in what they're going to because I've observed it and now that the Dairy Queen's open, you're going to have small children going back and forth across the street. And a couple of times I thought it was very unnecessary for the speed that was going down through town.
Yeah, I know that's something that we always address. Obviously, safety is a concern of ours. I will, and I'm not making excuses, but a lot of times when you're, when you have a siren going, it makes the car sound like it's going faster than what it really is.
Well, I've watched, I have observed, not the sound, the car itself. I have noticed. And I've had people come to me and complain about it. And I just don't think it's necessary unless it's a hostage situation, you know, because if it's a car wreck, car wreck's already taken place, you know? And I don't feel it's necessary to drive that fast through town.
Any other comments, questions? Matt, thank you. Thank you. Kelly's turn.
Yep.
Tom, gave you one.
Yep. Just an update where we've been working the Twin Oaks on that extension out there. It's complete except for dress up in the hand. That's what will be a little bit until it dries up. And then we'll be waiting for him to sign up for water services, which he'll have to pay for that and then go back and do that. Field repair, where Tom's been working on one of our water plants, water plant, repair's complete. It's been filled with water and Jay, the engineer, recommended that it's set for 30 days to make sure there's no leaks. That's where we're at with that. We recently installed two inch water meter and service at one of our water haulers, I'll put it that way. But they requested two inch water service, which helped us relieve a lot of the traffic off Wood Street as well as with a lot of the plant operators having to spend a lot of time standing there waiting for them to get filled up. We also have hired a new plant operator in training. We had our annual health department inspection in February. We've got a good report on that. We're going to be replacing customer serviceman. We had customer serviceman move over to operator training as he applied and that was the way that it was chosen. That's about all I have for now. I mean, everything else is an improved routine as far as service line work, plant operations.
Questions for Kelly?
I'm going to comment. Just reporting to council, the operator in training, Tom's been behind with an operator for a year, two years.
You've been there.
A good little while. We advertised for the job to see if we could get a college grad or somebody that's interested in that. And the folks within the city have applied for that job. So we hired one of the workers from Kelly's crew to do that operator in training now. It'll take him five or six years to be up to speed as an operator, but at least we're making progress as far as maybe not being behind the eight ball again when we lose people at the point. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Gary. Dave McCollum, city attorney.
I'll be brief, Mayor. Mr. Doss is a small moderator playing the ballgame tonight. I'm sure he wants to get up to see them. Cemetery mowing contract time, we're working on that. I haven't gotten the final details from Jerry Arnold, but that's one of those things we're working on. As Michael alluded to, the auction on the city's Beach Street property will be right here in council chambers on Wednesday, April 11th at 3 o'clock. Next week will be the first of three advertisements of the auction. But in addition to that, all the help we can get from our friends with the press and getting the good word out will be appreciated as well. One other little thing, I had a couple of calls, people asking me what I could do about the problem between Southern Lake and American movie classics. And I'm happy to report that I've resolved that. They managed to get together, I think about six hours before they were going to pull the plug on AMC. I did get an email because I did send an email off to Southern Lake and I forwarded that to the council. Most of what I'm going to take up with you is with ordinance 363 here in a few minutes. So I'll be quiet unless you have questions.
Questions for David? Thanks, David. Brings correspondence we have in you have in your packet. This, I had a pen stuck in there and moved it. Letter of public announcement, the 93rd birthday of the American Legion. Dear Mayor and County Commissioners, they sent this out. The American Legion will be celebrating its 93rd birthday on March the 15th.
Today.
Today. If possible, could you announce this and then do your meetings and share this information with the public? So today was the day. Also, you note that you have Bob Smorage's car there. Dennis Miller's on a three month break. And Dennis, Bob Smorage is our electrical inspector for the interim period. Brings us to our consent agenda, which is the minutes of the regular meeting, March 1st, building and wiring permits, paying the bills, Strawberry Festival facility requests, which are included in your packet, and the approval of the surplus auction sale Friday, April 27th. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made, sir, second. Second, in a second. Discussion?
I brought up about the other parade they're planning on having on May the 12th. Is that being discussed with the police officers?
Yes, it has or has not? I thought Teresa.
I was aware of it. I'm discussing it in detail.
We have, we requested some more information regarding that parade, but there is a parade, I believe it's Sunday. You have it in your packet.
I think it's Saturday evening.
Saturday evening before Strawberry Festival. First event's a horse and carriage parade at 5:00 PM on Strawberry Lane. Second is a Mother's Day feast and gospel celebration on May 13th. And other events, the show choir invitational at College Arts Center, May 12th. And those, the programs for the Strawberry Festival are out and available at a number of locations, including City Hall. It's also available online. Further discussion, not all in favor of the motion, signify, say a saying aye.
Aye.
Those know, as habit, I have given you a list of names last week for the park committee. Includes myself, Michael Doss, Jerry Arnold, Jay Holland, Michael Cowder, Laura Reed, Mike Livacey, Pam Martin, Robin Simons, Lauren Hinesman, Linda Vincent, Lois Clemmons, Beverly Cadel. And today we got another volunteer, Loretta Dawson. We had an organizational meeting last evening and looked over some of the things, some drawings of the parks and had some general discussion. Our next meeting is going to be on, let me look here real quick. Monday, April, Tuesday, April 3rd at 10 o'clock at City Park. If anyone is interested in being a part of this, be there with us on the, at City Park on April 3rd, Tuesday at 10:00 AM. on April the 3rd, Tuesday at 10:00 AM. If you're interested in joining the group, please contact City Hall. You can send an email here, or you can call and ask for Teresa. She'll get your name on the list and get you your materials. We'd be glad to have anyone who's interested. First reading ordinance 363, Brushy Fork Contract.
Mayor, this is ordinance number 363 of the City of Buchanan. And ordinance one, refinancing the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project. Two, crediting all payments made through the date of effectuation of this ordinance and thereafter as principal payment on the indebtedness established pursuant to ordinance number 291 of the City of Buchanan. And three, amending ordinance number 291 of the City of Buchanan. Whereas the City of Buchanan on May 3, 1998, pursuant to ordinance number 291, affected the imposition and collection of a surcharge fee upon all users of the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project, all in the manner as authorized pursuant to state statute and the rules and regulations of the West Virginia Public Service Commission. And whereas pursuant to Article 3C of ordinance number 291, the term of the project's surcharge fee upon Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer users was intentionally indefinite and to continue until such time as the city's general fund fully recouped its portion of the advanced construction cost identified in ordinance number 291 as $250,000, but which after completion of construction was actually determined to be the principal sum of only $150,000, together with interest at the rate of 4% per annum thereon, as attributed to the city's financing of the project. And whereas as of March 1, 2012, the sum of $68,733 had been collected by the city in principal and interest payments paid by the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer users, with the amount of $2,433 having been credited against the principal sum, and $66,300 having been paid to the city in interest. And whereas at the current rate of principal reduction and interest application, the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project's surcharge payments shall prove inadequate to pay off and discharge the debt balance for many decades. And whereas the city sanitary board specifically has recommended to the city council that the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project be reconsidered by the council in such a way whereby all surcharge payments previously paid, as well as all payments to be paid in the future, shall be credited as payments on the principal debt, thus making the 1998 debt an interest-free loan, as between the city's general fund and the city's sanitary board. And whereas municipal corporations are authorized by law to contribute financial assistance to their utility boards. And whereas the council now agrees with the city sanitary board that a refinancing of the indebtedness respecting the 1998 Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project in the manner recommended by the city sanitary board and as further set forth herein is reasonable and appropriate and will be fairer to the users of the Brushy Fork Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. And finally, whereas, the instant refinancing shall not affect the city's sanitary sewer tariff as filed with and approved by the West Virginia Public Service Commission, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Buchanan as follows. The eight findings track the whereas paragraphs that I just read to you, so I'm not going to go over those again. Article two makes it very specific that there are certain aspects and provisions of ordinance 291 that will continue. We're not gutting or eliminating that ordinance, we're just amending it. And then Article three is the effective date. This is a two-reading ordinance. I'm kind of laboring with whether or not we need to do a legal advertisement and have a public hearing. Since it has to do with rates, and it's not going to be a very lengthy notice, I'm going to err on the side of five days before your next council meeting of having a legal ad in the paper, and you'd have a public hearing on your April 5th agenda that anybody would want to comment on this. But this is not something that's going to increase rates. It's not going to lower them, it's not going to increase them, it's going to pay the debt off sooner. It's a good thing for the sanitary board, it's a good thing for the customers in the Brushy Fork Road area. So it is my recommendation that you react affirmatively on first reading to ordinance 363.
Motion to approve ordinance number 363 on first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, a second. Further discussion, not all in favor, signify so, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it. Brings us to comments and announcements. Michael, do you have anything further?
Do not have anything.
Mr. Thomas?
I just would like to make a couple comments. I've had complaints that Pam had talked about with excess speed as far as officers, and I'd encourage Matt to sit down with them and really highlight that, that's important. And with this unseasonably good weather for us, I've had a lot of comments about the conditions of our different city parks, and it just goes to highlight again how Jerry's staff has just got so much to do. And, you know, when you have, I think last year at this time, we had snow days, if I recall. And, you know, we just have to be patient to some degree, obviously, and give the persons an opportunity to really get on top of a lot of things that need to be done. That's it.
Pam?
Nothing.
John?
Scott? Where are we at with the testing, police officer?
We just gave the written test this past Monday, so the interview before the city service board will occur will be two weeks from that Monday.
We were getting that possibly a little long, I've got to help with that.
Fish?
No.
And I have nothing further. Anybody else out there got anything they want to say or questions they want to ask? Not adjourned, thank you very much for coming out. Website, which is www.bucannonpolice.com. And if you're interested, stop in. That's all I have. Okay, thanks. Skier? Scott?
Had someone asked me yesterday the status of an annexation effort that we had in place several years ago, Route 20 north, up from Lowe's, going up towards Pet Paradise at the top of the hill, installation of sewer lines, et cetera. And I think we had talked about that very shortly after I came on council, but I have not heard anything about that. Is that something that we can resurrect easily? Is that something that has gone away? If we've looked at, you know, obviously, when you annex, there's a potential of having some income going in or coming back into the city. And, you know, if we've had it out there and it's something we were going to do and should have done, I'd like to see us put that back on the priority list. And I don't know if that's directed to you, Kenny, or David, down to you, as far as where it stands?
I would defer. David, we're all about that.
Mayor, it's been one of those backburner items. We need to get about the 28 or 30 property owners that own out there that have agreed to come in to sign their formal petitions. They did letters of commitment as we were looking at gathering those monies, but we haven't gotten the petitions. So the petitions have to be prepared. Matt Heims can help me with that. And then Sam Ludlow and I'll probably divvy up the list as to who's going to approach which property owners. I worked with some of the property owners, Sam worked with some of the property owners. So it's, there's a lot of legwork involved with it, a lot of document preparation, but...
Well, I think there's some others of us that could share in the legwork.
Sure.
We had the petitions put together, we could get together and divvy them up, and it might not take a lot of time if everybody had a handful, give them a sign.
We'll try to move that back to the front burner here in the next, in the weeks ahead and get back to it.
Seller had 90 days to reclaim the property from the day of the sale, and he could not get a clear deed to it. And true to his word, a couple days after that, 90 days was up, we got a check of $15,000. We got to pay. Anything else? Anybody out there got any comments or questions? Well, thank you all for coming, we're adjourned.